Yep.
Yeah.
All right, nobody's here, but I'll gavel. Good evening and welcome to the October 7th, 2025 Lawrence City Commission meeting. The first item on the agenda is to consider a motion to recess into executive session.
I move to recess in executive session for approximately 45 minutes to discuss a personnel matter involving a city employee pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter exception, KSA 75-4319B1. The justification for the executive session is to protect employee privacy. The City Commission will resume its regular meeting in the City Commission room at 5:45 after the executive session is.
Second. Okay, that's a motion by Finkel-Dai, a second by Littlejohn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. We'll see you at 5:45.[408.61]
Okay, we're back from our executive session and we have nothing to report from that. And we'll go ahead and move on to the rules of the meeting. Sherry, would you share with the rules of the meeting with everybody tonight?
Of course, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. If you would please silence your cell phones. The primary format for accessing the meeting is in person at City Hall. Virtual access cannot be guaranteed due to potential technology issues. When the mayor calls for public comment, please approach the podium to indicate you wish to speak. Virtual participants should use the raise hand function. When prompted, select join as panelist. There will be a brief delay as your role changes. Once your name is called, please unmute and turn on your camera to provide your comments. Please state your name and zip code before providing your comments. All comments will be limited to three minutes. The city reserves the right to turn videos off or mute participants. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Sherry. All right, the next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. And the city commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting is their motion to approve the agenda as is.
Move to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda by Finkeldeis, seconded by Sellers. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes five zero. All right, the next item on our agenda are recognitions and proclamations. And at first, we're going to recognize some of our wonderful friends from Germany. And Bill Keel is here to speak to our Oyteen relationship.
Dr. Schonheinberger Meister. Thank you, Mayor Dever. Should I continue in German?
No, I think English would be much more productive.
And members of the commission. As you already said, I'm Bill Keel, Chair of Sister Cities Lawrence. We've been in business since the late eighties, so it's getting to be a long time. In 1989, the commission, your predecessors, approved our first sister in Oyteen, Germany. And we're very, very happy tonight that after 35 years of student exchanges, we have a group of 12 young people from the two high schools in Oyteen, accompanied by their chaperones, Ingrid Kramer and Lena Ziegert, from the Car Maria von Weber Schule, is that right? I do want to give a shout out to the Johann Heinrich Foss Schule, though, where I went to school, no, where I took students many, many years ago. I want to thank the city commission for their support for sister cities over these nearly four decades. We now have four sisters. Tocopeya Chile is the latest. Mesolongi, Greece, has joined with a new name. And Hertzka, Japan, which is celebrating its 35th anniversary this year with a delegation visit just in a couple of weeks. Yes. But again, we're very happy that the 12 students from the two high schools in Oyteen can be with us for three weeks here in the start of the hot and cold October that we've had. And I'd like to introduce their chaperones, who will then say a few words and introduce the 12 students.
Thank you, Bill, that'd be lovely.
Ingrid and Lena?
Okay, shall I start? Okay, good evening, everyone. We're so grateful that we can be here. Thank you so much for having us. I'm Ingrid Kramer, and I'm, well, the chaperone, as you've heard, of this wonderful group of students here. And actually, I only learned about this a few days before we were actually leaving because the actual chaperone, who had planned everything, the whole visit, yeah, everything really, fell ill, unfortunately. So I just had to step in in the very last minute. And I'm really, really happy that this worked out. I'm so glad that everyone managed, well, I got to work, no, it all worked out, sorry. It's a bit intimidating to be talking in front of a microphone, I'm not really used to that, that everybody got the chance to be here. And I could say that because I can speak from experience, having been on a student exchange program myself 33 years ago to the States as well. I was here for six weeks. And up to this day, I've got such wonderful memories from that time. And I really know about the importance of such an exchange program. And it's really, it's not only about meeting people and the memories that you make, but what it has taught me is, and I think that you probably are all making these experiences, you get to see different perspectives, different ways of seeing things. And, you know, we're all from different backgrounds, we speak different languages, and then we find out we've got so much in common. And that is such a wonderful experience. And, you know, receiving this hospitality, the host families who opened their homes to us and who are sharing their everyday life with us and who are so extremely welcoming that has struck me is just so amazing. And I'm so grateful for that and grateful that the students can experience that, too. And what I feel is that when you receive that hospitality, you just, you know, you want to give back to the community and to others as well. And so that's why I would like to thank everyone involved in this program. So the host families for opening their homes and everyone on the Sister Cities program as well for making this possible. And our host family, too, for welcoming us and, yeah, for receiving us and for preparing such a wonderful welcome. And yes, so thank you to everyone involved. And this year, we're really lucky because we actually have a co-chaperon, which is not normally the case. And Lena Ziegert is here as well, probably also wants to say a few words.
I might introduce myself. My name is Lena Ziegert. I am doing a voluntary social year at one of the schools of Oyteen, in the Weber School. And that's how I got to be the assistant chaperone of Ingrid Kramer this year. Yes, I'm very, very happy and grateful to be here. I've been staying with the most wonderful host family, Anna and Kelly Schultz, as well as Ingrid Kramer. And yes, thank you so much for having us.
So can we get introductions to the students? Is that okay?
The idea was that the students were all going to introduce themselves.
Awesome, perfectly.
If that's fine.
That'd be great, thank you very much.
Leah, do you want to come?
And your host family, I think you're supposed to say, too. Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Leah, and I'm staying with Stella Dawson. And I'm really thankful for taking part in this exchange program. And I'm really enjoying it so far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Alex, and I'm staying with the Weiser family. I'm very thankful for the hospitality. I really enjoy the experience. Thanks.
Thanks, Alex.
Yes, hello, I'm Russmus. I'm staying at Emery Lackley's house. I'm very thankful for the hospitality. And I'm having such a great time here, it's awesome, the school's awesome, the people are awesome here, I really enjoy it, yeah.
Thanks, Russ.
Thank you.
My name is Hannah, and I'm staying with Emery and her family. And yeah, thank you so much for everything, and it's wonderful to be here.
Thank you, Hannah.
Hi, I'm Isabel. I'm staying with Alice Lang and her family. And I'm also very thankful for this opportunity and being able to experience the American high school life.
Thank you, Isabel.
Hi, my name's Helen. I'm staying with Emma Tenery and their family. And I've been having a really incredible time, and I'm really thankful for this experience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Henrik. I'm staying with the Cowburn family. And I'm very thankful for the experiences I've made so far throughout the last three weeks.
Thanks, Henrik.
Hello, everyone, so I'm Levis. I'm staying with Alex and the Barker family. And I'm really enjoying experiencing the US, not only from a tourist point of view, but from a perspective of living here. And I'm just really thankful for getting that opportunity.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lucy, and I'm staying with Bella Ackerman and her family. And I'm having a really great time here in Lawrence, and I'm really thankful for that.
Thanks, Lucy. It's nice.
Hi, I'm Anna. I'm staying with the Barker family. Yeah, and I'm very grateful for the memories I already made and I'm going to make for the last days, yeah.
Thanks, Anna.
Hello, I'm Lotta Ziegert. I'm staying with the Biltz family. And I'm really grateful for experiencing the high school life. Yeah, I really like the variety of classes. And I enjoy having the typical experience with football games and everything that belongs to it. So thanks for having us.
Awesome. Thank you, Lotta.
Hi, my name is Luna. I'm also staying with Haley. And I really enjoyed the exchange so far, and I'm grateful for all the experience I got to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is that everyone?
Yeah, so these are our students, that was everyone.
Yeah.
And yes, so thank you so much that we get the chance to be here.
Well, thank you so much for stepping in at the last minute. I know that's not easy, but it seems like you're a flexible person because you've taken it all in stride. And I'm sure that your co-host is happy to have your assistance as you try to wrangle 12 teenage human beings in a new country. But more importantly, we just appreciate the bonds that are formed. And I was able to come to Oyteen last summer, and I wished I could have gone again this summer, but it's a beautiful place, been there many times, and love the people and the friendships and the relationships that there are really special. And we appreciate the efforts of our boards and our sister city organizations to help this keep going because we wouldn't go on without them. So thank you. I'm glad you have a better balance of males and females this year, if I remember correctly. It was weighted differently. So, and I think we want to get a picture with the commission at this point in time, if that's okay. So thank you very much, and we'll step out of the way. Thank you.
Where did you want us?
All right, guys, scooch this way, and you might, that's okay, they're tall. Head that way, just a little bit. Okay. Here we are.
It's Kelly. Thank you, paper.
Thank you.
I need to give it about a minute, if that's okay with you guys.
Thanks.
Tap the room.
See ya.
The next item on our agenda is to proclaim Sunday, October 12, 2025, as Lawrence Drive Electric Day. And let's see, where's my proclamation note here? Michael Allman, are you here? I don't see him.
No, Michael's not here. I'm here in his stead.
So why don't you speak to this?
Very welcome.
It's good to see you, yes, please. Why don't you speak to this proclamation if you'd like to before I start?
We're members of the Sustainability Action Network, and we invite everyone in this room, and in fact, everyone who's not in this room, to come to South Park this coming Sunday, October 12, from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. to see our seventh annual electric vehicle showcase. And commission, thank you for the support of the city of Lawrence. It's just, thank you so much for that.
Sure thing.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, it's helping keep the conversation going about alternative transport.
Absolutely. And without Michael, we wouldn't be having this conversation. He's a big supporter of all your Sustainability Action Network, so thanks for being there tonight. I'm going to go read the proclamation. Whereas the petroleum-fueled vehicles are responsible for over 50% of our local greenhouse gas emissions and are a contributing factor to air pollution and climate disruption, threatening the health of our citizens and the sustainability of our planet. And whereas the United States transportation sector has surpassed the electricity generation sector in climate heating emissions. And whereas plug-in electric vehicles use one-fifth the energy used by internal combustion vehicles and get 100 miles per gallon mile equivalent or better. And whereas plug-in electric vehicles produce no greenhouse gas emissions when charged with renewable energy and only one-fifth of the energy of the greenhouse gas emissions when charged with fossil fuels. And whereas September 12 to October 12, 2025, has been designated as National Drive Electric Month throughout the United States to educate our citizens about the benefits of plug-in electric vehicles and to promote their adoption. Now therefore, I, Mike Dever, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Sunday, October 12, 2025, as Lawrence Drive Electric Day and encourage all citizens to attend the Lawrence Electric Vehicle Showcase at South Park between 11:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. Thank you very much.
We hope to see you at the show, Mayor.
There you go. Thank you.
And then we have another final proclamation on our schedule this evening, and that is to proclaim Monday, October 13, 2025, as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas the city of Lawrence acknowledges that indigenous peoples of the lands now known as the Americas have resided here since time immobile. And whereas we recognize that Lawrence, Kansas stands upon the ancestral homelands of the Kanza and Osage indigenous peoples. And whereas Lawrence is proud to be home of the Haskell Indian Nations University, representing over 120 federal-recognized tribes and contributing significantly to our community. And whereas we deeply value the enduring intellectual, spiritual, and cultural contributions of indigenous peoples that have enriched the character of our city. And whereas the Indigenous Peoples' Day, initially proposed in 1977 by Native Nations to the United Nations, offers an opportunity to reflect upon the diverse struggles of indigenous people, acknowledge the historic injustices they have endured, and celebrate their resilient traditions. And whereas the promotion and support of ongoing efforts around equity and justice for indigenous people is critical, now therefore, I, Mike Dever, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Monday, October 13, 2025, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Lawrence. And I urge the citizens to reflect upon the culturally diverse struggles of indigenous people on this land, to encourage ongoing efforts to reflect the full and accurate history of our place, and to celebrate the resilient, culturally diverse indigenous traditions that values in our communities. culturally diverse indigenous traditions that values in our communities. Thank God. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and items on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and approved by one motion. Members of the governing body may remove items for separate discussion if desired. Members of the public may remove items identified as quasi-judicial for separate discussion if desired. Members of the public will be limited to three minutes for comments.
Mayor, I've been asked to pull D5C.
Roger. D5C. Is there anything else to remove from the consent agenda? Is that the quasi-judicial item?
No.
No. Okay. There's one quasi-judicial item. Anyone want to remove that? I didn't see anything on email, so seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item D5C?
Move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of D5C.
Second.
Okay, that's a motion by Finkel Dieh and a seconded by Larson. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Item D5C.
Hello, David Bastin. I didn't really get a chance to look at this thoroughly. I just was looking through here and that one happened to stand out because it was a million dollars for furniture fixtures and some equipment for the MSO campus. I did pull up some of those costs on some things. I don't know... I know the presentation there looks really nice and, you know, 50% off of... Let's take that table. It sounds really good, but not if you're paying five times as much for the table to begin with. Just, I mean, I've been a purchasing agent for a few companies and digging into prices, like a few of these I looked into, I mean, even at the sale price that we're getting for those items is too much. And I don't know... I know it was recommended by... I didn't actually write down what company put all this together, but it just goes back to some consultants. I know the city, we do need some consultants in some areas that we just aren't adept to, but, I mean, as a whole, a lot of this stuff we can be looking at internally and coming up with a lot better prices. I mean, if you just take what a purchasing agent would cost the city $100,000 roughly to go over stuff just like this, that would save just on this million dollars worth of stuff, I mean, just looking at it quickly is, you could easily save $200,000, which you'd pay for one person minus that. And this is just one instance in money-saving things that we could be doing as a whole in the city. And I think your job is to be good stewards of our money. And just looking at this, I'd just ask anybody that even has a question, just pull this up and look at the cost of some of these things that this company came up with and that you guys would have just approved, and you probably will anyway. But I just encourage the public to go look at these costs, look some of this stuff up yourselves, and you'll be amazed at what this great deal that we're getting on this item is. And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, David.
I don't know if Andy is here, but I see Melinda. Can you, anybody tell me how many staff members, employees will be located at the...
Andy is on.
Oh, Andy's on. Okay. If someone can tell me how many of our staff will be located at the new MSO campus.
Hi, this is Andy Ins, Engineering Program Manager with the MSO Department and Project Manager for the MSO Campus Project. In the Phase 1 building, there will be, I believe it was 160 employees between engineering staff, MSO admin, field operations staff, including streets, stormwater, water collector, water distribution and wastewater collections. On this furniture proposal, we did sit, we worked with the Dai-Quelle's design team to send out an RFP for, from different furniture vendors. We took tours of the furniture vendor warehouses and their showrooms, sorry, I was looking for the word there, and got proposals. The original budget that the design team had for furniture, based on the number of offices and space like that, was about $1.2 million. There were, they were all fairly close within that range, but this was the lowest cost, working with Spaces Inc. on their proposal. And they did, in the agenda item, there are about five different, five or six different, either cooperative or state contracts that they use for pricing. Omni is their primary one. This is a similar process that was used for the police facility and actually ended up being the same vendor.
Okay. Thank you, Andy.
Any other public comment on this item? I'm sure there's anybody online to speak to this, pulled it, item? Okay. I guess I just have a question, you know, it is a lot of money, of course, but I feel like staff has evaluated the costs and we have other bids out there. Is there some sort of tiered level of quality in this furniture that's out there? Meaning, are we, is there lesser quality materials we could buy at a lower cost, or can we get these items at a lower cost other than this contract? It seems to me if we have an agreed-upon contract and it's set at a price, that they're honoring that price, but the question would be, is there other lower prices available? And I'll open it up to MSO on that one.
Well, we are going, so this is probably the lowest price we would get for this furniture. But if there are other options that they have, we can discuss that with them, other manufacturers. This is high-quality furniture. It is, for the most part, all made in the US and stored locally, and it's a local firm, local installers, local, I say, you know, within the Kansas City area, but so there are probably some possibilities of selecting a cheaper, lower-quality furniture that they represent. But this was what they felt was most equivalent to the basis of design that the Dai-Quelle's team had come up with.
And how's this stuff at the, is this the same company as what we put in the police station? How's it held up relative to other items we might have out there?
It's the same furniture rep, and I believe, Melinda maybe could be able to speak to this, but it is steel cases, manufacturer for a lot of these. Melinda, do you have any comment to add on that?
Sure. Melinda Harker, Assistant Director, MSO. So this rep is now repping Spaces a different line of furniture. It is in the same comparable category. We were looking for something that was durable. This is furniture, most of the furniture we keep for decades at any of our facilities, so this isn't something that we wanted to pick furniture that would wear out in five to 10 years. So that was one piece. Many of, having toured during the police facility project, different furniture, as well as going through the process with Andy, on this furniture selection, it's right in line with what we were seeing. We did want to make sure that, you know, that this furniture could hold up to the type of use that we would have in those spaces.
Makes sense. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any other questions?
No, I'd just say I do a lot of contracting work and, you know, Spaces is one of the big vendors, I mean, for school districts, for companies who are building new buildings. So I review lots of contracts and I've reviewed a lot of their contracts. And so I know they're a reputable vendor that's used a lot, and I know a lot of people have, you know, selected them. And, you know, I feel good with the negotiated contracts. I mean, the nice thing about government work is you get these discounted contracts that some of my private clients don't get. And so the prices here are better than, you know, they get in some of the... Yeah, oh yeah. Yeah, these, on page 10 of the packet is, you know, the negotiated contracts. And those are better than the private sector that Spaces uses.
That you've seen, okay.
Yes, yeah. I've also had clients use some of these similar contracts. I mean, school districts and counties and others get to use these contracts as well, but the average engineering firm does not. So I feel good about it.
And Mayor, this kind of goes with, and I've seen similar with my work with the state when working in KDAHE. I remember when I had to get a new chair and we do ergonomic assessments, because again, they're wanting quality, high-quality furniture so that it lasts as long as, I mean, I knew people in our suite that would fight over eight-year-old chairs because they had good, they were good quality chairs. So, but I, you know, in looking at this, you know, I think when you see furniture, I think a lot of people think of desk chairs, some of the common things that we see in our homes, but this is furniture that's fitting desks. This is also including office spaces. So these are the facades for different offices that are going to be, you know, constructed into the MSO campus. So the idea that, you know, yes, the sticker price is a bit high, but when you break that down to 160 people, that's roughly $6,000 to retrofit an office. So that is, that's not, you know, your home office is not equal to a state or a more city-functional office that's gonna have to be able to have an asset that's way longer than, to Melinda's point five years. So, you know, I understand and I think, you know, Andy has done a good job of going through this. We're utilizing state contracts, which is what we're doing, and we're getting the discounts that we need to get, and we're using products that are made here in America. And so that also comes with a cost as well. So I had no qualms with it and I'm glad that we were able to have the discussion and be able to get a little bit more out of it.
Okay, thank you, Amber. Okay. Anything else? Somebody to add?
Move to authorize a purchase order with Spaces Inc. utilizing the Omni Partners Cooperative Purchasing Contract Number R240102 in the amount of $1,29,383.88 for furniture fixtures and equipment for the MSO Campus Phase 1, Project MS1-00023A.
Second.
Okay, that's a motion by Finkel Dieh, seconded by Larson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. All right. Next item on our agenda is to have a work session, and the work session is an opportunity for the City Commission to discuss items in greater detail. The Commission will take no binding actions on items presented during this time. The work session topics are eligible for public comment. Members of the public will be limited to three minutes for their comments. So the presentation is from the City of Lawrence Asset Management Plan and from MSO and Capital Financing Update from Finance and Baker Tilly. So you guys can manage this any way you want, but it's yours after this.
Great. Mayor, I'm gonna make a few comments while Rochelle is making her way up here. This is a response to a request from the City Commission to get more detail in some areas that honestly, we have spent a lot of, a lot of time and resources and energy over my time with the city. In fact, I went back to kind of look at my notations from my first observations of my first 100 days, and it said this, it reflected, "Our infrastructure needs a lot of love," is the way I described it. And we've set out to do that work over the last several years. And the way we've done it, I know that you've seen some of the presentations, and virtually every one of our agendas has mostly, most of the time on consent, but has some kind of infrastructure investment that we've been making over the course of six or seven years more intensively. And the way that we've been going about it, I think you'll get a sense of it, and I hope the public will get a sense of it, is tremendously complex. We've been using a lot of complex analytics and engineering to, before we make any investments, we make the right investments. We study them, we make sure that these systems, that we know about them and that we understand what's going to take to rehabilitate them in many cases, to completely rebuild them in many cases, but to also make sure that we've built system capacity for our future. So it's not just taking care of the potholes that we've seen today, but it is making sure that our systems are built and prepared for the future. And my observation, I get to be exposed to these, a lot of these experts that are on our team, that you'll hear from some of them tonight, but I consider that the work that we've done here is a center of excellence for our community. And I don't, I'm not shy about saying that. And I believe that while this has been heroic work, and it has been big investments by our community, by our taxpayers, which you are all very aware of, these investments is exactly what they are, and they will, I believe, have been meeting a need that we were asked to undertake. I know I was asked to undertake these needs, and it's been exciting to see them come to fruition here. We still have more ahead, which I know you know with our system plans, but I'm grateful, and I know our team is grateful for the chance to show to you and to the community what, how we're doing this, but also what we're doing and what we're preparing ourselves and our community to do and invest in. We've also brought in our partners and our advisors from Baker Tilly, and I'm excited to have some of their expertise on display here because it's a lot of background information that we have on each of these bond offerings and in each of these financing mechanisms to try and help us get the very best value we can. So it's really great to be able to assemble today and be able to set up this presentation. And my last comments before I turn it over to Rochelle are to recognize also that she is now one of only 10 certified public finance officers in the state of Kansas. She just received that credential and one of only 300 and some in the entire nation. So this is my chance to do that.
Do your rates go up now? I don't...
I don't think that's a GFOA best practice. Well, thank you tonight again. Rochelle Matthews, Director of Finance, and I wanted to take the opportunity to set this up tonight and talk about what we're gonna do. Our presentation is broken into three sections, starting with an asset management updates from our MSO colleagues, followed by kind of a CIP master plan overview, followed by a final section by Baker Tilly on capital finance. We'll take a small pause in between each section. If there's questions you might have, or we can save them to the end. And so with that, I'll hand it over to Brandon Bayless to start the asset management.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Brandon Bayless and I work for our Asset and Technology Group in the MSO Department. So appreciate the opportunity to share these updates tonight. So I'm gonna go through a quick agenda of what we're gonna talk about. We'll do a quick what and why of asset management, so just a refresher of what we've talked about in the past, and then focusing on a few highlights related to investing in the lowest cost of ownership for our assets. So we'll have Nick Hoyt talking about the collection system cleaning program, as well as the Southwest Conveyance Corridor Optimization Program, and then we'll finish up with the street maintenance PCI updates. So again, kind of what the what and why of asset management, we're focused on really understanding what assets we own as a city, own and maintain, as well as where those assets are located. So that's a big focus that we're working on towards that when it comes to asset management. We're also wanting to better understand the age. So, you know, what were, when were assets installed and what is the age of those assets, as well as the condition. So, you know, we're gonna be talking about the street PCI condition index. That's one of the things that we focus on specifically for... That's one of the things that we focus on specifically for streets, but we're really trying to understand that for all of our assets. Then we're also trying to understand and bet, and better dive into the service levels. So levels of service that we're hoping to achieve with various asset groups. And really all of this is going towards the goal of making data-driven decisions and really focused on the, the overall goal of having lowest cost of ownership for those assets. It also kind of helps us work on trying to prolong the life of our assets through maintenance activities, preventative maintenance activities. And then decreasing, hopefully decreasing our emergencies related to those assets and our ability to respond and understand how we can, you know, get out there and respond to the, those assets. And then in the end, you know, we're really trying to understand how we can increase the stability and compliance with regulatory requirements. So this all feeds back into our goal of the city strategic management, strategic management plan when it comes to sound fiscal stewardship. So all of these, all the work we're doing towards asset management is in support of that. And then giving some timelines. So these are the areas that we've been focused on the last couple of years, current and future. So we started out with our street, our maintenance operations groups, street, traffic, water distribution, wastewater collections and stormwater. We're currently going through the process with our transit parking facilities and park recreation groups. And then we'll be moving on to our plant operations and solid waste. So kind of give you an idea of the timeline and how much time it takes to work through some of these groups. So that's just an overview of what we're going into. And I'm, I'm going to pass it on to Nick Hoyt to talk about some of our collection system cleaning.
Thank you, Brandon.
Hello, my name's Nick Hoyt. I'm an Engineering Program Manager with the MSO Department. And I'm excited to be here today to talk about two successes we've recently had with asset management. If I could just kind of put asset management in a nutshell, I'd say it needs two things. One, it needs a lot of information, but you also have to organize that information. So if you put all the information into a, a school locker, like my boy's in middle school, it's not going to do you much good. So you need a lot of information, you need it organized so you can kind of sort through it. So we're going to go through two examples. One is a very micro example about a specific activity that our field crews do, and that is our cleaning program, sanitary sewer cleaning program. So to explain that, I got to kind of go back to the late 90s when that program started. And this graph here is a graph of yearly sanitary sewer overflows. So there in the late 90s, we're in the hundreds, close to 200. When I started working for the city, I would talk to the people that had been around here a while. They would talk about when it rained three or four inches back then, you would just get hundreds of calls. People might get a response, they might get a door hanger, but there really wasn't much we could do. And I would estimate that that 181 number was greatly under-reported. And the other thing to think about there is each one of those 181 might be multiple basements filling with sewage and lots of bad gross things in each like little section of that bar graph. So that was obviously not an ideal situation. And that was not meeting the city's level of, level of service. So one of the first things we did is we started a sewer cleaning program, which cleaned every sewer every four years. And, you know, immediately from the late 90s into the 2000s, you just saw this immediate huge drop off in that sanitary sewer overflows and other things too of similar calls to the city during wet weather and things like that. And so very evident that that was a successful program. And that really happened before we ramped up our rehab program and some of the other things we're doing. But the bad news with that, when something starts working, if there's still a problem, you just keep doing it more. So I've talked to other cities and they all kind of have this list, dun, 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 the list, you know? And that list grows every time there's a problem and like, what should we do? We should clean it more, clean it more, clean it more. So then we, over decades, we built this higher preventative maintenance list where we, instead of cleaning it every four years, we were cleaning it once a year, six months, three months, and even every month. Just to make sure that it wasn't clogging with grease and it wasn't, you know, roots blocking it. But that got to a point where it was a huge level of effort. You know, probably a week every month of a crew just cleaning these same sewers over and over again. It was effective, but it cost a lot of money. So we got into COVID and we got into a situation where our crews were, you know, you had the isolation and they couldn't be here for two weeks. And, you know, you had to separate this, that and the other thing. And it really put a stress on our labor availability. And it came to a point where such a huge portion of our staff time was spent cleaning these same sewers month after month after month. So then we kind of started talking like, well, why do we clean this one? Why do we clean that one? And we really didn't know, but we really weren't confident to move it back, right? Because we didn't really know why it got there in first place. So estimated cost to clean these sewers once a month, $690,000. That includes the staff time, the vehicle, vehicle depreciation, gas, all that good stuff. That's a huge cost. So we contracted with Trek Design Group to basically, we would clean the sewer once. And then instead of cleaning it repeatedly, they would CCTV inspect the sewer monthly and then three months, and then see how that grit and grease built up and then try to get that specific sewer on the correct maintenance schedule. So that was mainly 2023 and the results from that were quite effective. So a couple of things to note here. One is none of these 112 high-maintenance sewers didn't need a special cleaning. They were all, one was 18 months, but most of them were in the 12 to three months range. About a third of them did actually need the one-month cleaning, right? So we are hovering over the target where we needed to be. But just to get that right, we're looking at close to $400,000 a year saving in staff and equipment time, which then allows us to take that staff and put it in, focus on other places. So that, we consider this a huge success. Today, on the consent agenda, we're doing something similar with our three-month cleaning, where we're going to contract with Trek and have them TV that and make sure that's right on, on the right preventative maintenance schedule. But not quite as much low-hanging fruit in cost savings because we're only cleaning every three months instead of one month. So that's a, a micro example of a win. The next one is about the Southwest Conveyance Corridor, which this is somewhat complex. So I'm going to kind of go down a nerdy way and hopefully you guys can follow me. The City of Lawrence Collection System, like most Midwestern cities, is pretty complex. And that is because generally the wastewater treatment plant is along the river. And over decades and decades and decades, the city grows away from that. And you never want to build like a 100-year system. So it's like every 20 years or so, there's a major improvement to get the new development that flows to the treatment plant. So over decades, there can be diversions and parallel interceptors and multi-routes where all the water can go. Lawrence is a little unique where our, our growth is really bound over the last 56 years, straight west. Currently, we have two treatment plants on the east side of town. So as we grow west, there's always this, every couple of decades, you got to re-figure out how much growth is out there, how much wastewater are they making? And then how do you get that flow back to the east, to the treatment plants? In 2018, we built the, coming from the 2010 master planning effort, the main project that came out of that was in 2018, Pump Station 10 at 31st and Louisiana was built, which then pumped to a new treatment plant, the Walker Russa Treatment Plant southeast of town. That was needed, but it also made the system even more complex because now there's kind of two endpoints for all the flow to go. But coming out of that, we knew that the next major conveyance problem was going to be in southwest Lawrence. Because basically from Sixth Street South, all drains to the south. So that's like, as we've been growing west, it's a big chunk. And it, almost all of it flows through Pump Station 9, which is a big pump station, but it also has storage there where there's giant concrete tanks that store the flow during wet weather. So coming out of the, when we built the Walker Russa Treatment Plant, we had three projects in the CIP, expand Pump Station 9 and basically build conveyance downstream of Pump Station 9, basically through 31st Street, and then also add conveyance upstream of Pump Station 9. And, I mean, I think those were kind of placeholders and we knew we needed more conveyance there. But as we got closer to that and started looking into it, it was like, well, if we do these projects, we're just going to make downstream going to be bigger? Is this the right way to spend our money? So in the 2022 CIP, that, basically that same money was reorganized into a program, Southwest Lawrence Conveyance Corridor Program. And it's like, at that point, we don't know exactly what we're going to do, but we know we need to spend money there on that southwest part of town to get the flow from the new development to the east part of town. The first thing in that program was to do a study and build a model. And that's what consultants generally like to do. The model from 2010 didn't quite have the detail in it we needed to make good decisions. So we built a whole new model. That started with, over the previous five or six years, we had a flow monitoring program where we put a flow meter in the sewer and then rain gauges, and then when it rains, we know where, how much water's there. So we calibrated, rebuilt the model and then calibrated it to those storm events that we recorded. Majority of that was from 2019, which was a very wet year. So it was a very conservative model. We then, the Plan Development Services just came out with new population growth estimates through 2040. So we took where they were saying that population was going to be and we put that on our existing system. So each one of these blue dots is where the projected population growth was going to be. Most of it right there, kind of on this, on the west side of town, right there crossing K10. The next thing we're going to do is then, we have a whole citywide model and we're going to take about a quarter of it, that, that southwest part of town. And we're going, this is a complex thing. We're going to create a multi-objective evolutionary, evolutionary algorithm, right? Which is really complex. But basically what it does is it puts the model in the cloud and it tries to run the model over and over and over again to find the best solution. So in a traditional engineering sense, you might, you know, five, six people sit in a room and we come up with, let's say, four alternatives. And then we model the four alternatives and come up with a cost estimate and try and figure out the best of the four alternatives. What we're trying to do with this model is throw thousands of alternatives against the wall and have the model show us which is the best. So there's about 20 specific projects that we put in the model of upgrading different pump stations, reroutes, expanding storage, adding storage, all that type of stuff. And then every pipe is able to get bigger as the algorithm runs. So in this here, every dot is a specific model run with each being a different solution. Okay? So at, and it's multi-objective. So the two objectives are to reduce overflows, that sounds good, and do it for the least amount of money possible. So if we were to do nothing and we take that 2040 population and put it on our existing system, we're at $0, but we're close to 10 million gallons of overflow for a 10-year design storm. The other thing is on the left-hand side, to get to zero overflows, like the cost is almost going infinite there. It's going straight up and down. So what we were, what we did is that the model would run, let's say, 5,000 times. We'd really focused in on the, the blue dots, which were kind of that front, which was showing cost-effective solutions, moving it, reducing overflows without greatly increasing the cost. And then we really focused in on that knee of the curve where this is where we're getting the best bang of for our buck before the cost just goes straight vertical into the hundreds of millions of dollars. So we ran that several times. And some with more of a conveyance-focused alternative, some with a storage-focused alternative. We got our selective alternative group, which is right there, that kind of green, green dot. But that, it's a complex kind of output from a model. So the next thing we had to do is break that into projects. So here are my red circles, my circles got a little off from the map, but that's all right. So we created a whole list of projects and we were able to see which ones had to happen for 2030, what had to happen for 2040. We also got pretty lucky because right about the same time, we were working with KDOT of what sewers on that southwest part of town had to be moved for the highway project and what project, and what sewers on the southwest part of town needed to be extended to provide service west to K10. So right now we have three projects in construction that's part of the K10 project. And those red circles are moved from where they're supposed to be. And then there's three more projects in design that will be coming in the next couple of years. There's also the other projects that we know need to happen and that we have detailed information and cost estimates on that. So going back to the 2019 CIP, two things jump out to me. One is the force main, the yellow, with circled in yellow there, Pump Station 9 force main to PS10 wasn't really needed. The algorithm is really saying in the 2030s, we need to add more storage at Pump Station 9, right? So that saved us $6 million of putting a new pipe down 31st Street and tearing that whole place up. And then once we would have done that, we would have had to add more capacity downstream of that. The other thing, the Lower Yankee Tank Project, $8.6 million, which is to the west of Pump Station 9, that wasn't actually the most critical part that was needed. It was farther upstream than that, more closer on the west side of Lake Albemarle. So we really, you know, we studied the Jesus out of it, but we were really able to come to a, a really good solution, very cost-effective over the long term. So it took a long time, but I think it was very worth it. And I think with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Cronin with the, talk about some pavements.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you, Nick.
Hello, Dave Cronin, City Engineer in MSO. And I'm going to talk a little bit about our pavement maintenance program and how we're using asset management. So we've talked about this before, but our pavement is measured with a pavement condition index. And that's a standard measure that we use to assess the surface condition of the pavement on a scale of 0 to 100. The target is a 70. And so that kind of represents the point where preventative maintenance is the most cost-effective. So pavement that's in the good or satisfactory range there, you can see on the table on the left, should receive, it's best to receive just the preventative maintenance to extend its life at a relatively low cost. And then when you start dipping below 70, the cost of repairs started to increase, increasing and requires more expensive rehabilitation treatments like milling overlays. And then further below that into the 40 and below ranges where we're looking at where reconstruction is often the most recommended option, but it's the most expensive option. So the graph on the right, that kind of illustrates how pavement condition declines over time. And it's an example of good asset management and how the cost of repairs increases exponentially as the condition worsens. So if you were to kind of look into the detail of the graph there, spending about $2, say a square yard for preventative maintenance early on can prevent the need to expend $12 to $16 in this example per square yard of rehabilitation soon after. So really the key takeaway in this is just investing in timely preventative maintenance is really the key to extend, to save money and extend our pavement life. And so a little bit about how we're using asset management. We have a, a team with our GIS staff and Brandon's team, our field operations staff that's out there seeing our street condition every day and making repairs, and then our engineering staff. And we meet every couple of weeks to kind of see where we're at, what projects are planned, where we're, what pivots we may need to make to, to address situations, to address streets earlier than maybe we, we thought. But, so what we kind of do is, as we're looking at, at our model and the data that we have, is that overall, every three years now, we drive all of the streets in Lawrence. And now we have 923 lane miles of streets. We drive them all really almost the same point in time, get a. And so we do that every three years, but then every year in between, we are inputting the work history that we do, also inputting any new streets that were constructed with new subdivisions as those come online, and starting to use the model to track degradation rates and kind of give us a point in time of where our PCI is at and how we're trending. And so some of the inputs that go into that, we kind of look at degradation rate. And so of the 923 lane miles of streets, we got about 4,000 unique segments, and all of those streets kind of are a little unique depending on when they were built, the materials they were built with, their age, the traffic they see day to day. They all have their own unique degradation rate, but we kind of, we look at that and how they're degradating over time. We update annually our treatment costs, so to reflect current pricing and account for inflation, since construction materials change every year. We look at our decision criteria, and that's kind of how we define what kind of treatment each street should get and how effective each type of maintenance is expected to be when we do the treatment on that street. Then once we update that, we run the model, it simulates funding strategies, then we take some time to verify some of those results, and ultimately it gives us a recommended funding level to increase the PCI. And as I said earlier, really our goal is to get to a 70. So, you know, another thing the model helps us do, it does help tell us, you know, these are the streets in this given year and the next, say, five years that we should plan on doing this treatment level to continue to maintain it. So there are some, it is great to have the model, but it also takes, we do use staff time to go out and kind of verify, is it, the model telling us to do the right streets at the right time? And then with our limited budget, how do we best use the funding that we have to use? You know, we do some preventative maintenance and some major rehabilitation. It's trying to find the right mix of that and the strategy behind that. So where are we at now? So our last overall condition, when we drove the streets in 2023, we were at about a 63.1. And so there on the left, you can see it broken down by street classification. We're down slightly, I think, in what we're projecting in 2025. Again, that's just a projection until we conduct the next full assessment cycle, which is down slightly, but we are really doing really well in arterial streets. So this is assuming all of the work that is getting done this year gets done, we're looking to be around arterial 74, which is really excellent. So those are the streets, Twenty Third Street, Iowa, Sixth Street, Walker, Rusa Castle, those streets that are major arterial, see a lot of our traffic, high-volume traffic, high-truck traffic, bus traffic. And so it's something we're really proud on and proud of, and that we've really caught up in that area. And so collector streets, a little less, we're at 64 now. And then local streets is really the area that we need to be focusing on here, and that's kind of what we're planning on really in the next five years. So overall, you know, as we look at these different funding scenarios and models, we're in the range of $85 million to $105 million in backlog, and that would be the amount of money to increase. You know, if we had that money today and spin it, we could really get up closer to the 70 mark. But, you know, that's obviously not realistic, so it's making incremental progress over time to keep increasing our PCI. And so another thing that I will say with this is that some of the streets that we've done our major reconstruction projects on, we're seeing less degradation rate per year. I think on average, just on average across the city, we're around 2.5 points per year if we don't do anything. But some of the major work that we have done is starting to decrease that degradation rate. So this graph on the right kind of puts those, gives us an idea of those different condition categories. About 42% is 70 or above, about 42% is in that major rehab area below 70, and then about 16 or so percent is very poor or in very bad condition. So looking forward to our five-year street maintenance funding that's in the CIP, right now, running with our models, we projected that we, if we had $19.2 million in 2026 and continued that funding, assuming that that increases by 3% inflation over 20 years, that would be the amount that it would take to get to a PCI of 70. So you can see in the chart there is what is currently funded in the CIP the next five years. So the green bar is the street maintenance program, which is the bulk of that funding. CIP projects do also represent some funding that's going to street maintenance. So in 2026, we're looking at reconstructing Bob Billings between Castle and Monterey Way, which is really the only street that we've identified of a major arterial street that needs to be fully rebuilt. It is in really bad shape, and we continue to do maintenance on that. So that one is going to be, it's going out to bid here this fall, and we're looking forward to doing that next year. But other than that, most of the street maintenance money is through that street maintenance program that's in the CIP. So next year, we do have a very high funding level. It's really one of the highest that we've had, so we're hoping with that that we can make some progress and then continue as we continue on in outer years of the CIP and budget cycles that we find funding to continually improve our street condition. And this slide kind of shows, it shows that last slide with the assumptions of the green line being if we had a fully funded program, and this is over 10 years from 2026 to 2036, our trajectory moving towards a PCI of 70. So you can see there on the far left, the first dot in 2026, we start bumping up in '27 and '28, I think realizing some of the planned improvements that we're really investing on here in the next year or two. And then as we look into those outer years of the five-year CIP, '29, '30 starts to drop a little, and that's that delta of the unfunded amount where we anticipate inflation to go up, and if we don't keep up with some of the funding, we may start to see the slide a little. So I would say just, overall, this is, you know, funding is a key component to increasing the PCI, but in addition to that, it's running these asset management models to also do the right treatments at the right time. So that's another strategy where we can decrease the cost per lane mile per year overall across the city, and so that over time, as we continue to do this, and it's an iterative process, that we may be able to make some more improvements in PCI without a fully funded program, but it really take, it's a combination of the funding and some of the strategies. So I believe that is my last slide. So with that, I'd stand for, I guess, any questions for me or Nick on any of our slides or information?
I think you alluded to it, but I want to make sure you maybe kind of finish it out for me. You talked about treatment methods that might help to allow the, extend the useful life of the pavement to put down. How much money have we, would you say is the best way to approach the PM or the preventative maintenance cycle or, you know, continuously stay on it? Does that end up costing us much less in the near term if we spend, say, this amount over a period of time just to help get the roads, keep them going along or get them by for a period of time? And then is there some point in time where these treatment methods are no longer, you know, useful, and then you got to go to a full, you know, milling overlay? Or what is this, is there like a, is there a theory that they get to this point, then you stop with the treatment methods and you get to the full adept repair or some, something along those means? Can you make me understand that a little bit?
Yeah. That's my favorite slide, for sure, that.
Yeah.
That's the one. Yes, that's the graphic on the right. But overall, like I mentioned, every street's different and unique. So 70 is really that cutoff point where it's, where you're doing lower-cost preventative maintenance. Can you do it a notch or 270? Sure. But once you get much below that, that's when we get into more expensive treatments. So we really spend our funding across all three maintenance strategies between preventative maintenance, major rehab, and reconstruction. So we've had a backlog in streets that needed reconstruction. So when we reconstruct Iowa this year, we're spending a lot of money on five lane miles of streets, but it needs to be done. And once we get that done, we're not going to be spending that much money on that street for decades. I mean, we'll have major, we'll have minor ceiling we may need to do, but these streets, some of these streets we've rebuilt are going to stand up for a long time. So it's really a mix of the different strategies. And talking with our field folks, and I didn't, I didn't have a slide on this, but we have, we're tracking the potholes and the cost that we spend on patching potholes. One of the projects in the CIP that's not an arterial street, but that will be reconstructed, I think in '28, is Harvard between Monterey Way and Castle. That's, we've spent a significant amount of money on just routine street maintenance that we saw, well, we were going to, we were going to do a milling overlay on the street, and we're like, well, we got to take up the street and redo it. So it's really a mix of those strategies, and so it's not like spending it all on preventative maintenance this year and then major rehab, but it's kind of just looking at the trends. And then, and then we also, like, we want to do different areas at a time. So you're looking, you're looking at some neighborhoods, and this street may be at a 75, and this may be a 65, but sometimes it makes sense to do the same treatment on the streets because, you know, it's within a range. So a lot of those things go into how we kind of develop the program, as long as looking at other, looking at other projects where we're doing water projects, storm sewer projects and timing those. So sometimes we wait Sixth Street between Iowa and downtown that we did a couple of years ago. That we should have done it a year or two before, but we wanted to hold off and do storm sewer and waterline and do it all at once. So there's a lot of different factors, I guess, that go into some of the decisions that we make on the streets. But really, it's across the board. I don't think we'll ever really get every street over a 70. That's not realistic, right? And it costs a lot of money to, you know, improve all the streets at once, but then you're maintaining, then you have all the streets deteriorating at the same rate or different, similar rate. So it's kind of an incremental strategy to continue funding as, as we, as we see costs go up and our PCI kind of staying level or decreasing a little, so.
I think you answered my question. Thank you.
All right. Oh, thank you. To kind of follow up on that, I was wondering if you had any information of like how far we were behind before we kind of installed this asset management plan? How far late, because how far below that 70 we were and where we're getting to the point where we're always paying for preventative maintenance, where it was not making, not being fiduciarily responsible? And whereas it might have been like more responsible just to go ahead and, you know, attack it and, you know, reconstruct it or something like that? I was wondering if you had any of that prior history or if you had an idea of kind of what excess money or percentage of money that we overspent doing in that preventative maintenance as opposed to like, you know, getting it done when we needed to get it done?
Yeah, I would say, I don't know if I have an amount of money, but I could say, we've been raiding the streets for over 20 years. We kind of changed the method in 2020, or 2019, 2020, where we did, drove all the streets at once. We started investment, investing more time with our asset management group and reviewing models versus just, you know, saying, oh, this street needs this treatment. And so overall, I think after 2026, I'd be able to answer that question a little better once we've had like three data points or three cycles of driving the streets and getting a new PCI. Overall, we've been in like the lower to mid 60s.
Okay.
For the last 10-plus years. But I am, I'm an optimistic person, and I think that a lot of the investment that we've made, we are going to start seeing some increase over time. We're not going to jump up right away, but I think we're going to be getting there. Especially, like I mentioned, we've spent so much money on arterial streets, which is a big chunk, big chunk of money. When we can spread that out into the local streets, do some lower-cost treatments to keep, to keep those up, that we're going to be doing more surface area. So not that we want a false PCI, but you can do, spend some money on huge surface area, right? And then drive, drive the streets and get a really good number, but that may not be the case, you know, three years later. So hopefully it answers your question, but I think, you know, it's really, we've been kind of hovering in the same range. I think in 2020, we were around a 65, 2023, 63.1, and then what we're looking at right now is a 62 as a projection, so.
Gotcha. That's kind of, thank you, I appreciate it.
The arterial streets, that is the one, the 70.1 in 2023 and now a 74, that was, that's never been higher. I mean, that was, has historically been low, and we've been reconstructing streets over the last 15 years to really, to really improve those. So there's been a lot of work there. So that's something where, yes, we're down a little overall, but arterial streets that get driven the most and that we hear most about, that we, in the past, heard a lot more about from the public was improving those arterial streets.
Thanks.
Dave, I just had a quick clarifying question between slides 28 and 29. So in 28, at the bottom, you say there's a backlog of, backlog of about $85 to $105 million. Then on the five-year street maintenance funding on the piece where it says, you know, to get to a 70, that's that funding with the, with the, with the part of inflation. I don't know why everybody's struggling tonight. With inflation could take over 20 years. Does that, does that statement include the backlog amount into that? So you're saying that the 19.2, if we stayed with that funding, it would take us roughly 20 years to get to that 70. Does that account for the backlog that is noted on slide 28?
This being slide 28, I don't have the numbers.
Okay, just go back one.
This is 28.
That's 28, and that's 20, and then the next one's 29, so.
Yeah. Well, I would say it's, the backlog is a portion of that, of this red, these red numbers.
Okay.
And continuing that, you know, over 20 years. So that's just five years. And so you're looking 30-ish million dollars there over five years. And yeah, and so it's a range, it's, it's really that number, if we had $105 million, I feel confident we could get pretty close to a 70 if we wanted to next year, right? So that, that's kind of what I said, the backlog. When we run the models, the model is saying that's in today's dollars, that is the deficit that we're at between like a 70 and a 63.
Okay. So we'd be making headway, but we'd still be playing catch-up, for lack of better words.
Yeah. Yep.
I got a question, Dave. Are we using LiDAR to evaluate the streets at this point?
We are. The trucks that drive the streets, every three years, they use LiDAR. They have cameras.
How long have we been using that to do the evaluations?
We've done two cycles. We did it end of 2019, 2020, and then in 2023. So we've done two, I call it three-year cycle. So we'll do that again at the end of 2026, going into '27.
What's LiDAR?
LiDAR, it uses cameras to get images.
Yeah.
That's the, but yeah, it can pinpoint down to a millimeter. So these vans or trucks have different cameras that point to the ground, they can measure cracks with the cameras, and then, and ultimately that, there's standard testing and measurement for. So, these vans or trucks have different cameras that point to the ground, they can measure cracks with the cameras, and then, ultimately, that, there's standard testing and measurement procedures that that results in a PCI value.
So, it's data that's scientifically gathered? Versus, historically, didn't the engineers go out and just evaluate the streets?
Correct.
By looks? So, now, we've actually got hard data that we're using to give us a better evaluation.
Correct.
As part of our asset management. That's good. Thank you.
I have a question for Nick. But, before I do that, can you just, one of my favorite pages to send people to is the PCI page, the website? Because people, you know, sadly, people say, well, my street has to be the worst street in the city. And I'm like, well, let's look it up and see if your street really is the worst street in the city. And, sometimes, it's close. But, other times, they see, well, maybe I was not so bad. But, it also lays out, you know, the work we're doing, which I think people are always interested in, wins my job. Anyway, maybe just mention that for the people watching, how we maintain that and what people can find on that page.
Sure. Yeah, we have a street maintenance webpage. So, if you go to our webpage and get to the street maintenance webpage, there's different links. So, there's the link that you mentioned that has the PCI for each street in the community, so you can go log in, click, click on the street segment, it'll tell you the PCI. We also have our 2026 to 2030 street maintenance plan with the funded, the funds that we anticipate to have, and what streets we will be doing in those years. The outer years are a little less certain, I would say, that, you know, we've already got our plan for '26 done. We're working on bid documents and plans right now for the work in '26, to start that early next year. And now, we're kind of focused on really looking at '27. But, you can see '26 through '30 by year, what streets and what treatment is anticipated.
And, like I said, I think that's, I use this a lot, and, for example, my local street is in the 2030 plan, so I tell my neighbors not to count on it, but it's coming, that, at least on the plan, that they know when to look at it. So, I think it's a very helpful page. Thank you. But, I did have a question for Nick. Did I hear you write, when you were talking about the cleaning cycle, you gave us the example of the 112 lines we look at, we were previously cleaning once a month? Now, we have another set that we've previously been doing every three months?
Yes.
And how many are there?
I think it's a similar number. I know that both groups are around 20,000 feet of sewer. I don't know if it was 112 segments, but it's a very, very similar-sized group. And it's not, on this slide, 20 sewers were moved to the three-month.
Yeah.
It's not that group, because that group's already been analyzed. So, it's the previous three-month preventative maintenance cycle that we're going to take a look at with the contract that was on consent today.
And, is there another group after that? Is there a six-month group? Or, how many?
Well, I think we'll have to see how the three-month turns out, because, you know, the farther to the right you get, the less low-hanging fruit there is, right? If there's not that huge cost of cleaning it once a month, you know, it's harder to make up the cost of constantly TV-ing it.
Yeah.
You know, so, we'll see what the three-month project turns out, and if that was really cost-effective. I don't see it being like, a six-month payback, because, you know, instead of spending 700,000 a year, we're probably spending somewhere like, 200,000 or 300,000 a year. So, if half the sewers move to the right, you know, it can't pay itself back as quick. But, I know that, from Scott down through the crews, they all really liked the project and the program of, let's just stop cleaning constantly and make sure we're doing that on the right schedule.
And again, that is a in-house crew that does that cleaning, has for years.
Yeah.
And, just because I'm interested, what else does that crew do?
CCTV inspection. Generally, we're trying to TV every sewer in town every 10 years. Since we did this project, we've been able to spend a lot more time on the larger interceptors, which, TVing those, which those kind of have been, I don't want to say neglected, but not scrutinized as much. And then, when you have a problem there, it gets very messy really quick. What else, Scott, do they do?
Do you want to?
Yeah, come over here and tell us what other things that those crews do.
Good evening. Scott Fuenz, General Manager, Field Operations for Emma. So, yeah, so, this is really, we don't give Nick enough credit. We're very excited about this and the hours that is freed up. But, again, not neglected, but the interceptors have been ignored for a while, for sure. Down some of our major thoroughfares and things like that. But, we're behind on a lot of manhole adjustments, things in people's yards that are sticking up, things like that, that have just been ignored, a lot of buried manholes, things like that. So, that's really where we're focused. And again, we were probably, not probably, we were getting behind on our four-year cleaning program as well. That was starting to stretch into needing a fifth quarter. So, it's allowed us to catch up on a lot of that stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think, any other questions before we move on to the finance part of our presentation?
All right. Good evening again, Rochelle Matthews, Director of Finance. And I'm going to spend a little bit of time here talking through some of the master plans and guiding documents that then feed into our capital improvement planning and process, and as well as some details on the CIP. And so, here on the screen are some examples of the guiding documents that shape these things. These play a vital role in making sure our projects align with the strategic goals. And, these are like, the framework documents that we use both to prioritize projects and highlight to our community, not only are we providing community services, but we're planning for infrastructure in the future. And I think a really key point of the presentation that was just put up is, our base asset management skills and processes inform these documents just as much as these documents inform those practices, and it's an ecosystem that helps each other. I think it's also important, this is not an exhaustive list of all of our master plans, that there are many sub-plans and supporting documents and smaller items attached to this, similar to some of the camera scoping and analysis that goes into that. A really good example is the Citywide Strategic Plan. You know, that houses all our outcomes of the work we do and our commitments of how we do that. And that document is supported by governing body policies, such as the fund balance, capital improvement plan, and investment policy that help guide how to execute and plan and put that document into the future. I mean, similar to the asset management program, I think, and one highlight on here that we don't talk enough about is the MSO Technical, Operations and Technical Resources that help guide people who are building, expanding here of what they need to do in order to build to fit where our community is going, such as the Transportation 2050 Plan. Each one of these plans is hyperlinked on here, so for anyone who wants more information, these hyperlinks will take you directly to the policy to learn more about those. The CIP process, I know we've seen this slide before, but with our base asset management practices and those development and application of those guiding documents really then brings us into the drafting of the Capital Improvement Plan. And so, what you're seeing here is the standard process that our, the city goes through, where we start taking requests in January and February, and then they move through the various stages. We're almost on a monthly basis, a specific task is applied to this process. And in my next slide, I'd like to take a couple of minutes to focus on the pure approval scoring process and then the financing plan. So, here is a visualization of the prioritization scoring matrix. So, when a requester puts forth a project, whether that's a staff member or a community member, they have to score their project to alignment with all of these categories, either from a zero to three or a zero to six number, when they submit that. And then, there is a robust review by our champions, as well as technical experts, to review the project details and the scores for these areas to affirm them, update, amend them, to get to a final score, kind of in the yellow box, which then we apply a weight to, based on the strategic plan and guidelines we put forth, to get to a final total score, which then is reported to you all in the CIP plan. So, there's a very robust review in that March-to-April timeline where we're developing. For example, I am the Sound Fiscal Steward Champion, and so, in my area, we're asking questions like, what is its impact on resources? Would this project generate new revenue? Or conversely, what is the impact on resources from a budgetary perspective? Would this project potentially save budgetary cost? Or, would this project need additional operational support? So, we're identifying those as part of the process, when we're looking at the process, to then, when we give us decision points and data to move on to the next section. So, for these, we're specifically looking at the Debt Service Fund, which is a budgeted property tax mill levy used to pay for general obligation debt. So, we heard a lot about some water utility projects, those are revenue bonds, this would be more of the streets and Dave's PCI. This is a 10-year look back at the mill levy that we have budgeted in that fund. You'll see a slight increase in 2018, where we specifically set mills aside to construct the new police department building, and then leveled out. And in 2023, we did move mills into the general fund for general operation support. And pretty much since then, we've held the mill levy flat. So, once we have a CIP document that's been reviewed and a list of projects, we then have to compare those needs against the funding level. In the case of this fund, we take this mill rate and the assumed assessed valuation to generate, what's a revenue amount that we can budget against? And staff work collectively as a review team with the CI Committee, CIP Committee, city management, commission input, and we separate those projects into the funded/unfunded. So, that very much that chart that Dave showed earlier with what can we fund and what is unfunded, trying to capture our true needs of the infrastructure for the city. And so, then, we can bring forward to you, all sections of the CIP have those projects outlined across by years of funding, and then also the unfunded portion. So, once we get to there, that is how we build a CIP that fits into the financial forecast, for example, here in the Debt Service Fund. Once we get through community input, public hearings, and the final adoption, we would then take that plan and move towards the capital financing phase that our friends at Baker Tilly are going to talk about. But, I would pause here for a minute to have any specific questions on these.
Any questions? None for me.
Rochelle, question slash comment, but mostly a question. I know that we've had several conversations, or at least has been brought up, about why don't we forecast, you know, mill levy or certain things out five years, 10 years, and whatnot? In your opinion, in your expert opinion, why, is that a practice that we could do, we should do, concerns, cautions, if we do move forward with something like that?
Sure. So, it's very easy. I think Dave alluded to this point, the five-year window, when we know the projects and we have a certain level of confidence, and we have, we know what assessed valuation's growth is going to be, we can estimate general inflation on both sides of the income statement, right? And so, that is part of the process. Before the budget team and I bring you a CIP, we complete that over a five-year window, and even a 10-year window. And we've provided that in the past CIP process. And, you know, we can Excel is a wonderful tool, we can go out any number of years, but the cone of uncertainty starts to open up. We can make some assumptions about, like, not promising everyone streets are going to get done in these certain years, making some assumptions about inflation, about population growth, assessed valuation. We can make those, it's just the certainty becomes less and less. And so, you then have to discount that information for planning purposes. So, we do perform five-year and 10-year lookouts when we're preparing these kinds of things and when we're evaluating projects. So, it is a practice to put these forecasts out. It's just the tenor of, what is our level of risk we're willing to accept for going out when we're having to make bigger and bigger assumptions about future years?
Thank you. Thank you. I think you're good. Thank you, so.
Could we take a short break?
You bet.
Before we get into the finance?
We need a break? Ten minutes or five minutes?
Ten minutes.
Ten-minute break. We'll be back in 10 minutes at 7:29 or 7:30.
We just know you're going to talk a long time.
Yeah.
We will not.
He said that.
So some fixed rate bonds, either that year or the year after and so forth. It's been a practice that's been going on for a while. And I believe it provides the city and the city staff some flexibility. It allows for final budget numbers to get finalized before you do the long-term borrowing. Allows for certain changes in the capital improvement plan before the long-term borrowing is issued. So it does provide some flexibilities. But, you know, when I started looking at this, I also identified some costs and risks. You're going through two transactions rather than one. You have some market and credit risk. You issue the temporary notes and a year later, you have to take it out with fixed rate bonds. What if interest rates go up quite a bit? You could have locked in a lower interest rate in the first year. What if there's some economic event where we go into recession where interest rates go up a lot because of that? Or you're locked out where you can't access the market? So there's a different risk out there that kind of offsets the flexibility. So as we discussed this with the city, you know, we've discussed that we probably just need to have some time to review the use of temporary notes and alternatives to address both the city's needs and goals, but also address some of those risks. Options include internal borrowing, using some cash, and we reimburse the city after the period the projects are completed, doing multi-year interim financing. Some people actually would use those short-term notes, but more to diversify their debt portfolio, not the kind of plan for budgeting purposes, but hey, rather than having all fixed rate bonds, I might have some short-term debt in my books. So there's different ways to go about that. Typically, you know, the temp notes is usually called bond anticipation notes or tax anticipation notes, and you typically see it when you don't have money to repay the debt, like you're building a sewer system. You need some time there to build the sewer system in order to collect the revenues than issue the debt. So there's different ways in which we could probably balance some of the risks that are out there. Some of the projects the city goes through might be beneficial due to temporary notes, but there's probably some projects that might just be easier to do fixed rate bonds right off the bat and avoid the use of interim financing. Eliminate some of those risks. So we'll work for the city, or proposing to work for the city, to look at different alternatives as to the financing structures they use. The other thing, too, is the official statement for the city's general obligations. One thing I noticed is that the official statement includes a listing of all the projects that are getting financed, and this is a general obligation of the city. Typically, you don't see that in a general obligation official statement. You know, the credit or the security for those bonds is the full faith and credit of the city. So whether that project's successful, whether that project goes over, whether that project goes under, the city still has to pay that debt service. Typically, you don't see projects listed to this extent unless it's a revenue bond, like a toll road. Obviously, someone who's investing in toll roads wants to know if the bridge is going to get fixed or if the roads are going to be good. So usually, you list those projects out for those kind of official statements, but not typically for a general obligation. So one alternative to balance these risks will also be to take a look at kind of disclosure practice of the city, maybe to move that transparency from the bond offering document to a different place in the city's website and eliminate some of the information that's out there for the bond disclosure. So that's the first area we looked at. The next area we want to talk about is rating agencies. Obviously, everyone thinks the rating agencies are important, and they are. They provide an assessment of the city's credit. The other misnomer about rating agencies is that often people tie a bond rating to outstanding debt. The more debt you have, the lower the rating should be, and vice versa. This slide I have right now really talks about the different four angles of ratings that Moody's and other rating agencies use. And you'll see leverage in the middle there, it's 30%, is just a portion of what rating agencies actually look at. The other two components they look at is economy, financial performance such as reserves and liquidity, and then what's called institutional framework, which is the lowest factor. That looks at like management of the city. It also looks as to what your local ordinances are, what your past practices are, what state laws you have that impact what you can do here at the local level. As Tom said, I come from Wisconsin, and in the state of Wisconsin, we have some very tight caps on what governments can do. So a lot of governments in Wisconsin, local governments in Wisconsin, don't score well here because they can't raise taxes to what they need to in order to address some of the concerns that are going on. So this 10%, we'll take a look at that as to how it impacts the city's overall rating. So what the rating agencies do is they look at all these different factors, gather information in from your audit financial statements, other disclosure, other information, capital improvement plans, as we discussed earlier, and they basically do a scorecard where they say, okay, based on all these factors and all these ratings here, here's where we can get to a final rating. In the next slide, we've done that based upon the city's 2024 act for. And a lot of small numbers here, but you know, the bottom of the page, the key thing is that based upon their metrics, the city comes out of the AA2, which is a AA even rating. Moody's has a AA1, is AA plus, AA3 is AA minus. So AA2 per the Moody's scorecard is where they come out for the city of Lawrence. You will recall that the city's actual general obligation rating is a AA1. So there's some notching that goes on. And one notch that the city gets an advantage of is the presence of the University of Kansas, which is a pretty stabilized institution here in the city. Other factors that are part of the notching process is demographics, financial controls, management, ESG, risk, cybersecurity, different things that really you can't add a number to based upon information in the act for, but other information that they can take into consideration to get to the final rating. A AA1 rating for a city is good. This chart here just shows for Moody's back in April 2025, the distribution of their ratings. And you'll see fewer communities have actually a AAA rating. You know, Lawrence is at AA1, and the median for all city ratings is AA2. So ahead of the curve. Often, we get some questions about AAA rating. Obviously, it's pretty impressive, you know, it sounds good. It's an expensive luxury to have, you know. To get to a AAA rating, you have to make certain commitments. The bigger issue is maintain that AAA because you have to lock in certain reserves, meet certain levels. As I've often told people kind of sarcastically, you know, from AAA, there's only one way to go, it's down. So it's pretty expensive, and we'll get into it later, but you know, this is just an opinion of a rating agency. It's not really the important opinion for the city as to the cost of their borrowing. Just for information, we looked at Moody's information for other Kansas municipalities that are similarly rated and just provided a bunch of data here as to how Lawrence compares to some other communities. I'm not going to go over all of it, but I think you'll see that, you know, some have a lot of debt, some don't have much debt, some have a lot of reserves, some don't have reserves. And this highlights again that the rating of a municipality takes into account more than just outstanding debt. So that's for the general obligation. I guess before I jump into the utility, I just want to read a statement, and I'm not sure if you've seen this, but you know, Moody's has rated the city twice in the last year. And a key paragraph that is included in the rating report for both credits, the general obligation and the recent water revenue credit is this. The stable outlook reflects the expectations that continued economic expansion, utility rate increases, and formal financial policies will enable the city to maintain its strong financial position and manageable long-term liabilities while implementing the capital improvement plan. So in short, the rating agencies, Moody's, is aware that there is some additional debt coming through. You know, the city staff, Austin Spaker Tilly, have shared with the rating agencies, and they understand that there is capital improvement cost, there's unforeseen situations. You know, I have a client right now outside of Milwaukee, which needs $40 million to build new public works building. They normally issue about $5, $6 million a year. So at $40 million, you know, it's like, oh, my goodness. The rating agencies are aware that stuff happens, and it's part of the planning, and you just don't want to surprise a rating agency. You want to make sure they're aware what's happening. I think there's been good communication here for the Moody's to understand what's going on in Lawrence. Again, that's for the general obligation, or what would be considered to be the city's rating. Now, looking at the water and sewage revenue credit, same thing. It's not just debt, it's multiple factors. And this page here, there's actually five or four different categories. The system characteristics, which is like the water sewage system, the financial strength, debt service coverage, management, and legal provisions, such as additional bonds tests, rate covenants, and so forth. So different criteria than the city's general obligation or Moody's general obligation. And we did the same thing, using the act from 2024, come out with a AA3 rating based upon the different, you know, way the information flows through. You'll see the management has a pretty good rating, the financial strength has some AAAs and single As. It's all weighted, and again, the scorecard comes out with a AA3, notched up to a AA2. And that difference between the general obligation and the water credit is something that sometimes will show some strengths of the utility or weaknesses of utility. And having just that one notch from AA1 to AA2, it's pretty consistent and highlights that it's a pretty good managed utility in our perspective. As for the AA2, you know, how does that relate to other municipalities? Similar chart, you know, right now, you're in the category of most of the other ratings. The median actually is a AA3, so similar to the general obligation. The city's water credit is higher than the median of other utilities across the United States. So that's just, again, the third party from a rating agency's perspective. It's important, people always talk to it, but the key thing is Moody's doesn't buy your bonds. Investors do, underwriters do. So it's their opinion that's important. They may use that Moody's information to formulate their investment decision, but they also make their own investment decision. The world's a different place now, the internet, AI. Investors can get this information without going to Moody's. So it's actually the underwriters and investors, which is the important part to look at. So one way we kind of gauge as to the strength of the credit is, well, what is the interest from those communities? So looking at your general obligation sales from the last three years, this is a lot of numbers here, but I want to point you to the column called spread, which is the middle column for each set of numbers. And that's the spread over the index in which the bonds were sold. And you'll see for 2025, for example, it started at five basis points and increases upward, but nothing here is alarming to us. These are spreads that we find are pretty consistent with a AA1 rated credit. So, you know, from this, we're like, well, your bonds are pricing in line with the rating you have, meaning that the investors are sharing the same opinion as Moody's. The next thing we look at is, okay, when you go out to a competitive bid of your bonds, how many bids are you getting? Who's all interested? And you'll see here that the number ranges, I think, from eight to 11 as to firms that are interested in your bonds. When I try to explain municipal bonds, sometimes I go back to cars and how you sell cars. And this is an example. You have a car, you want to sell it. You put an ad out or you put it on Facebook Marketplace or whatever you do these days. And obviously, if you just get one interest in that car, you're going to be like, hmm, is that car really worth anything? Only one person's interested in it. But if you get like 10 replies or 12 replies, a lot of people are interested in that car. And likewise, now they're starting to fight over the price of that car. The same thing kind of happens with municipal bonds. More underwriters, more investors that are interested in help the city get a better cost of capital in their borrowings because more people are interested in the bonds. And here again, we see, you know, eight to 10 bids, which is very good for a AA1 credit, rated credit. That's for the general obligation credit. Similar information for the AA2 rated water credit. The spreads are a little bit wider because it's the lower rated credit, but also getting good interest from the underwriters. Eight, 12 bids here, too. Highlighted the Baird winning bid back in 2024. There was actually 26 different underwriters that participated with Baird in that bid. So while we're only showing possibly eight or nine different bids here, you probably had close to 40 different underwriters interested in those obligations when they sold back in 2024. So this summarizing why I just said, you know, based upon the number of bids that you're getting, it just seems that there is good interest in the city's credits. You know, next slide will actually show you some other numbers. From a base perspective, the only requirement out there is from a tax exempt law standpoint, is that you really need to get three bids in order to meet some tax exempt law provisions. So anything over three is a bonus. Not saying three is the minimum, but that's just one number that's out there. The other thing that we look at is just the spread between the bids. And just going backwards for a little bit, this bid from that I mentioned about Baird, you'll see the winning bid was a 4.036. The second bid was a 4.0377, pretty close. That means a lot of investors, a lot of underwriters, shared the same credit opinion about the city, and they bid aggressively to get these bonds in order to have the spread very close like that. So that's something else we look at to kind of gauge some strength as to the city's credits. How many bids are good? Here's just some information that we pulled from the MSRB. Tom mentioned how we're regulated, and one of the regulators that we have is the Municipal Securities Real Making Board. And they do some market information, and one thing they looked at was the number of competitive bids from 2009 to 2019. And for the size of transactions that the city normally issues, during that time period, the range was probably five to seven bidders. And I showed that the city is getting from eight, nine, 10 different bids. So you're above the average. You may say that's an old study from 2009 to 2019, but they did a follow-up study in 2020, and that still was around that five to seven range. So getting more bids than what the national averages show. The final way in which we kind of gauge investor settlement is, you know, when you sell bonds, they get bought by an underwriter and investor, and those are marketable securities. So after a certain amount of time, whoever purchased those bonds may say, hey, I want to sell these in the secondary market. Going back to the car example, you know, hey, I bought that car, I want to get rid of it. What's the value of that car? And we looked at the 2025 transaction, just saw what kind of activity happened after we sold those bonds in April 2025. And the spread to MMD column here is the one I wanted to highlight, is that six months after that, the bonds were still selling in that 11, 14, 16 spread. That maturity, when we sold it in the primary market, was actually 20 spread, so actually pricing through the primary market. Not saying that investors have a stronger opinion about the city right now, but what we watch is to make sure that you're not losing value with the investors. So another way in which we kind of just gauge as to what's going on with investors and interest in the city's bonds. So cover three things quickly, I talk fast. First, the National Rating Agency really has no concerns. I read to you what they say in their statement. One thing I want to highlight is that using the 24 results, I mentioned that the city's underlying GO rating was a AA2, notching up to a AA1. Last year, that spreadsheet actually came in at AA3, notching up to AA1. So from a Moody's perspective on that spreadsheet, you know, they're saying, hey, it's a little bit underlying stronger credit here, and it's because of the strengthening local economy. Underwriters and investors continue to show interest in the city's obligations based upon the numbers I showed you. You know, no concerns that we're seeing right now from rating agencies and underwriters. Obviously, transparency, sharing information with the rating agencies, sharing information with investors, making sure they're all aware what the plans are for the future is important to help keep that investor relations and credit agency opinions going forward. And then finally, related to the process, again, we just think there's probably some more discussion that's needed to look at how we balance that interim financing process that's currently being used. Questions?
Thanks, David. Any questions? Okay. Anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Afterwards.
All right. Is that the end of our presentations this evening? I want to make sure. Anything else that you wanted to add after all this was put forward? Well, appreciate everything that was provided. It was very educational, and I still want to know why they bump us up or down, but I like the idea that we're looking like we're financially, at least the community is looking better than it was a year ago, which is always good news.
May I have a quick question I wanted to ask in regards to, I know you spoke to some of the restrictions that local governments or municipalities have in Wisconsin just because of state statute or whatnot, and not trying to do an apples to apples or apples to orange comparison. What could potentially be some red flags for us that could be passed down from legislation from Topeka that could impact how we move in our forecasting and credit scores?
I'm loathe, but they said they wouldn't hear me unless I met the mic. You know, that could be very osmeans. I think, you know, your local government trade organizations, whether it be Lego Cities or municipality organization, I mean, they'll be aware and they'll see this when it comes up. In Wisconsin, you know, we can only increase our tax levy by our capital improvement in the area, so like 0.3%. So we're really restricted as to how we can increase our tax levies. So that's the example from Wisconsin, but I think the key thing is, is that it will be so dramatic on all the communities that the trade organizations that represent you will see this happening, raise some flags, let you know that to say, hey, you need to call and, you know, let people know this is bad for them.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Just to expand on that while we have you here, are there some states that have put some policies in place that affected municipalities that are coming to your attention that did affect the creditworthiness of the municipal bonds?
The one that I'm well aware of, just because we have a large presence in that state, is Indiana. And Ohio is also taking a look at what Indiana did. Passing some provisions that, you know, in my explanation, underlie just the general credit strength of a subentity in that state. So are some of these changes related to politics? Unfortunately, yes. But Indiana is the one right now that I'm aware of that has happened, that's getting a lot of press and concerns. I mean, to the extent, and we talked about the risk about the, you know, temporary notes and issues to general obligations, there was a time period, I think we might still be in that time period, where governments in Indiana couldn't issue bonds because people hadn't digested yet what the change in statutes were in the state of Indiana.
Yeah, there are unfunded pension liabilities at state levels I know that have affected some of the other states that I've been in, where we just couldn't get the increased bonds.
All right. Public comment on this item? Oh, you got it. I'm sorry. Do you have another question?
It's a legislative question, but I'll wait. I'll let's get to public comment. Sorry. It can wait.
Hello. Mandy Enfield, could you pull up my image?
Did you kind of stop her?
Yep.
Okay. That's all right. Just making sure.
Thank you. Thank you for discussing the city's debt financing with your municipal advisors tonight. They concluded that the city's debt is sustainable based on its credit and the demand for city bonds. However, their analysis looks backward. The Coalition for Collaborative Governance has been asking the commission to discuss how the city plans to make, to pay for the substantial debt it already has, and the additional debt it is taking on in the next few years. The city's current credit rating reflects $429 million in debt as of the end of 2024. But for '25 and '26, the city has approved another $264 million in debt-funded projects, bringing the total to about $653 million by the end of 2026, a 52% increase over the level used for the current credit rating. Between 2027 and 2030, another $104 million is already approved, and that number often grows over time. Can you pull up my second image? Since March, our coalition has asked for details about how the city will pay for this future debt. Five months later, the city finally released partial payment plans, one for property tax-funded debt, and another just yesterday for debt paid through utility fees. Together, these documents show that by 2030, annual debt payments will rise by about $20 million, a 64% increase in just five years. Can the city afford those higher payments when it had to make $6.6 million in cuts just to balance the 2026 budget? And can our residents afford to pay $20 million more per year than they do today? The city plans to cover some costs with cash reserves, but most will come from continued utility rate increases. Utility fees have risen every year since 2020, and the city plans another 44% increase between 2025 and 2030, with more beyond that. The city's credit rating may stay strong because it will keep collecting more revenue, but our coalition believes the more important question for the commission is this: Do residents have the financial capacity to absorb these ongoing increases? Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Christina McKenna, 66046. The Coalition for Collaborative Governance supports the city's effort to evaluate its use of one-year temporary notes and appreciates this step in improving former practices so we may have a better way forward together. We're allies for good stewardship, and as taxpayers who fund city operations and capital planning, we also rely on clear and accurate disclosures of funds throughout all stages of planning and project execution. I have spoken to you before about how the city's documentation of reissued temporary notes has obscured how much new debt the city is taking on each year and how much the city's debt payments are each year, along with the concerns this raises. Currently, the practice of reissuing one-year notes blends the funds returned unspent from the previous temp notes, along with irrelevant principal and interest, inflating reported expenses. It then combines a new amount where they have reborrowed proceeds and new temp note issuances, inflating reported revenue. As of now, the city returns unused funds from previous temp notes and blends this with the principal and interest payments they make, which inflates their reported expenses. The city then combines the amount of the reborrowed temp note proceeds with new temp note issuances, inflating the reported revenue. This obscures tens of millions of dollars in annual debt activity and conflicts with the city's stated commitment to providing transparent, easy access to relevant, accurate data for budgeting and decision-making, making the documentation difficult to comprehend and reconcile. To resolve this, we recommend issuing a single temporary note for the duration of each project so revenue and expenses are recorded once, providing more accurate budgeting information and monetary savings, when also considering closing costs. If the city continues annual reissuance, we request you please provide plain language breakdowns of debt issuances, repayments, and usage in the public budget. Debt should remain tied to specific projects with documentation that allows comparison of approved budgets to actual costs, along with exactly how the funds were used. Finally, we ask the city not give ear to the statement on one of the slides that the city can reduce project details in official statements as the city can be transparent with other avenues. As the lack of clarity and transparency we already have from the city to the community at large is what is so frustrating, and we find those details to be essential yet already lacking, we offer these requests in partnership to help the city deliver the transparency and fiscal accuracy residents expect and deserve, along with allowing for truly collaborative governance and support by the constituents who voted for you to represent them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kirk, can you grab, pull up Holly's?
Sure. Thank you.
The Coalition for Collaborative Governance hopes that this discussion can also address the city's long-term plans for paying their debt and the impact this debt will have on your constituents. Just yesterday, we received up-to-date information about the city's plan to pay for their revenue bond debt, and it shows that the city plans to increase utility rates every year through 2042, the end of the chart. I previously shared with you how changes to the city's utility rates would affect an average Lawrence household, and Commissioner Sellers suggested that it would be more transparent to show how these rate increases will impact different types of households. City staff had never provided baseline data for different-sized households before, so Melinda Harger, Assistant MSO Director, kindly and promptly helped us find the information needed to do this analysis. Our analysis demonstrated that between 2020 and 2028, the city will have increased their utility rates an average of 6% to 8% per year for eight years in a row, with a cumulative increase of 57% to 80% or even more, depending on household type and size. Would you display my second image? This chart shows how these utility fee increases have and will affect single-family and multifamily households with one to five people in them during this eight-year period. A household of four in a single-family home should expect to pay $1,276 more in 2028 than they would have paid in 2020, while a single resident in the same type of home would expect to pay $520 more. Families in multifamily homes should expect slightly lower increases, and very low-income elderly residents receive a 65% discount on these bills. Increases in some of the utility fees have a greater impact on larger households, so a household of four in a single-family home would see an 80% increase in this eight-year period, while a single resident in a similar home faces a 67% increase. These rate increases are likely more than double inflation, which can be expected to be around 33% over this eight-year period. While other Kansas utility companies have raised their rates this year, none have done so repeatedly. Black Hills hadn't raised their rates in more than 10 years, and Evergy has only raised their rates one other time in the last eight years. An important goal in the city's strategic plan is to provide access to affordable housing, yet rising utility fees reduce housing affordability, and members of our community struggle financially. A survey recently released by Harvard shows that 40% of people under 30 are barely getting by. As you consider the city's long-term plan for paying off their debt, I ask that you evaluate how the city's debt decisions are impacting the affordability of our community's housing. Thank you.
Any other public comment in the room? Sherri, I think there's one hand raised.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, y'all. Jeffrey Huppler, 66044. You hear me thumbs up?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. I just want to say, I really appreciate all the information presented tonight. I learned so much, this is pretty incredible. Happy to hear about the sewer cleaning program that's been happening and that's been very much improving the situation and that we're using good data to inform updating that maintenance schedule. And so we're using good data to inform good governance. And so, we're using good data to inform good governance. I just want to state out the blue, we need systems that are prepared for climate resilience. As far as street maintenance goes, I love that we're using LiDAR, that's so cool. I want to ask, what other innovative technology or solutions are we using or we might adopt to reinforce any weak points over, you know, the actual construction of these streets that we're investing so much money into? I know this is a major portion of the budget, and I understand it's a loud issue. And I did see that there seemed to be room in that maintenance curve that was showed earlier. Finally, for the streets, I look forward to hearing about any collaboration that could happen between MSO and the streets to inform the data and, you know, data collection and making models to increase that PCI number they were hoping to achieve. The CIP, sound like you could commit, like the public could submit projects to it as long as it got a high score, so I'm gonna look into that and see if I or others can contribute to that process, that's really encouraging to hear. I suppose that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
That's it, Mayor.
Okay. Ed? Does anybody have any questions after hearing the public comment, or do you want to provide any feedback after what we heard tonight?
I had a question, just kind of similar to what Mr. Hepler was referencing, but not quite. I was just curious if Dave is around, just on the streets themselves, how much the, or how, how the level of degradation has decreased over years? If you have any information on how more, how more efficient we've become in building city streets and if they can last longer, you know, so that we won't have to address them as much.
Yeah, I don't have any good data, I would say, but there's been some things that we've done over the last 20 years with specifications of materials that have improved the longevity of streets. The big thing that was done about 20 years ago is treating the base, the soil underneath the streets. We have a lot of fat clay in Lawrence that shrinks and swells with water, it kind of turns into like Play-Doh if you don't treat it. And so, we had a lot of streets built 20 years before we started using treatment that were built on this bad dirt, and then we have to, they cost more money. So, I wish I had some good numbers to say, well, these streets built in this decade or whatever, whatever, are lasting longer, I don't know if we're there yet. We have, like I said, we have 4,000 segments, it is all, it is tied to like the work history that we've done on those segments when they were built, so those are things that we're continuing to try to, those are things that we're working on, I would say. So, those are good, you know, I guess, good things that we need to keep thinking about. Same thing with concrete, we've been using durable aggregate in concrete the last 20 years, which concrete that was poured before that had older limestone in it that shrunk and swell and broke up, and it didn't last very long, right? So, we've, streets that we've built with concrete or curb and gutter in the last 20, 25 years is lasting significantly longer than just 10 years before that. So, those are a couple of examples. And then, other things, just in the realm of technology and speaking about LiDAR, there's, I mean, AI is getting a big footprint into street maintenance as well in different communities and different softwares that are able to really look at high-level scenarios and fundings, a lot of it from talking to other communities that have done trials or companies, it's not completely there yet where you still need to have like the human element and being able to do a lot of inputs into that to train it. But I think the future, there's a lot of, it, the future's moving quick in technology and innovation and, and, and a lot of place, in a lot of areas, but street maintenance as well. So, like, LiDAR is cool too, but there's, you know, cars now have smart technology where even cars report data back to the manufacturer on bumps, and there's, there are trials that are going on in academics and with other communities for cars that are reporting that kind of data. And so, you know, like I mentioned, we plan on driving the streets once every three years, while there's, in the future, there's going to be more live data that will be out there from just people driving the streets that we may have access to to keep, you know, getting more iterations and things like that in our modeling. So, we're monitoring a lot of these technologies and having conversations and talking with other communities that have done trials of different materials or, or softwares and just, because things that are interesting to me and I think things that are, it's really the, the future of, of asset management, so.
Cool, yeah, that's good to hear, thanks.
There's probably a lot of things I just was mentioning, but hopefully that answered some of the.
Oh, no, it did. I was, I was, I was kind of curious, I'm glad Mr. Hepler, I mentioned that because I was kind of curious myself to see exactly what kind of innovation, other innovations we were thinking about or were on, were on the table.
We should say bike ped and transit services, reducing rides, traffic, too.
All right, any other questions or comments?
I'll just make a couple of comments, thank you for the presentation, this one, I, I mean, I enjoyed that presentation, learned a lot, and remember when we first saw the asset management plan a couple of years ago, it was very exciting and the, we had seen that similar chart that we, that Nick presented earlier, talking about how we're doing some of our stormwater projects, and I still use that in some of the, in the talks I give around the community, because it's a very interesting tool. Couple of things I would add, I was joking, when we had our break, when I joined the law firm in 1999, 2000, the first time I tried to sue the city was for the sewer backup, because back then, people's houses got backed up all the time, and Jerry Cooley was defending the city at the time, and for anyone who knows Jerry, he did not settle very quickly, let's say that. But, you know, back in the day, back in the early 2000s, as that report said, I mean, it was a common occurrence for people to, to have damage in their house, to lose family photos, to be very mad with the, with the city. So, it's not just, you know, you know, saving time of our workforce, I mean, it, it was saving time all over the place and, and obviously good for the community, but I remember that. But I would say, you know, a couple of things, you know, the chart, you know, we had talked about, you know, several of these charts, but the chart on the bond, the mill rate on our, our debt, you know, that, we dropped that in 2023, about a mill and a half, and, you know, I'd kind of forgotten about that until looking back at that, but, you know, we talked about this before, you know, in 2023, we had a $26 million balance in that account, and our revenue over expenses was $6 million. And, you know, I think at that point, we decided, well, you know, we could slow down the, the increase on that, and even after that reduction, you know, we've been bringing in about two, in 2024, about two and a half million, in 2025, a million, in 2026, not quite so much, revenue over expenses, and have that, that, you know, balance in the $34 million range. And so, you know, we've talked about this before about, you know, the, the ability to, to pay on go-bonds, obviously have all sorts of things, but one of that is, you know, what's our, our mill levy, and, you know, we've been able to keep it in this long-range plan of our debt service in that 10-year chart that the coalition put up there. That's assuming we keep the mill levy at the 7.9%, which is the lower rate that we've kept since 2023, and I think that's something to be proud of, not the higher rate. And so, I, I was interested to see that. You know, the other thing I would comment, you know, Rochelle talked about, you can do all sorts of things with spreadsheets, and, yeah, I mean, one of the things you do with spreadsheets is, you know, what is the, what's the increase in our operating budget every year going forward? And when you look at our revenue model, we put in there, you know, 4%, you know, we were talking about increase in salaries, increase in health insurance, increase in inflation, to have that 4% increase. So, to talk about what, you know, what the increase is going to be over a 10-year period, well, you're going to have those higher costs. And so, the real question is these, you know, obviously what we intentionally did a couple of years ago and plan to do for the next couple of years is what's that amount above the 4%, that 7, 8, 9% that we have intentionally put into place so that we could do these major projects? And so, no question, it's expensive, no question, people are paying for it, but obviously, as we talked about what, what we're getting for it, that's the trade-off. And the last thing I'd say about this, and I always like to remind people about this, don't forget that KU and nonprofits and churches pay WADO. They don't pay property taxes, you know? I think KU, I think we saw that a couple of weeks ago, KU pays something like $2.5 million a year or something in WADO.
More than that.
That's a low number, much more than that, you know? But to be able to, to, our asset management planning where we make sure we're allocating those costs between, you know, property tax-based and revenue-based, it's important to make sure places like KU and, you know, our nonprofits, our hospital, our school district, our county, who don't pay property taxes, they do pay for WADO that we sell, and they do pay those fees, and so, it's very important to, to make sure we're capturing those, because that is a benefit to the, to the property tax holder. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, it's, this is all, I'm really glad that this information was put forward to us, especially regarding our asset management plan and kind of giving folks an idea of what goes into it, the planning, the innovation, and kind of the data that we're pulling from to go ahead and make informed decisions. And then, regarding our debt, you know, kind of what Vice Mayor Finkeldey said, this is part of the larger, you know, plan, especially regarding the debt service fund and the mill levy in that regard, to go ahead and keep it as flat as possible. But also with the utility rates, you know, kind of what we voted on a couple of years ago was to not to have those wide swings as well, is to make sure that it's as stable as possible, so. And all this is to make sure, and all this funnels into what we do in our asset management plan and our infrastructure, to go ahead and have the lowest cost of ownership, which is ultimately important, because that's kind of why I asked the kind of, some of the questions with Dave, is, you know, kind of where we were at years before when we were just paying, you know, kind of, it's almost like a car, when you've got a car that's falling apart and you just keep paying for repairs as opposed to paying for a new car, because eventually the repairs build up until it's worth more than the car itself than it would be if you went and got a new car. And that's kind of where we, analogous to where we were. So, now, we're trying to get back on the path where we're trying to break a little bit more even and get to that lowest cost of ownership, where we're making the most use of our investments and being the most fiduciary responsible that we can be. So, I was really glad to see this information, so, thank you, thank you all for presenting it and all the hard work that went into it.
Thanks, thanks, Bart.
Yeah, I want to just thank staff for all the, the information provided, these were some really excellent presentations tonight, and I really appreciate it very much, and information from Baker Tiller was, was very good too, and I appreciate what the works that's being done on that end and that we're constantly looking at better ways to do things, appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Lisa. Mr. Sellers, do you want anything to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to hit on a few points. Protocol, example, happy, thank you, thank you, all the thank yous have been said, which I do believe this was a, a very timely presentation. I think a lot of the, a lot of the information that came out of this, I think, kind of circles back to a couple of questions that have come up in several different meetings, that doesn't necessarily, it speaks to the work that the city that we're doing through the strategic plan, and also some of the goals and expectations that we hear from, from community members. And so, one of the words that I, I heard tonight, and I've heard it through all our, our presentations, and I think it speaks to the work that is being done, is that this is a big, complex network, and that there are, I've talked about competing values, and there are lots of competing values in, in all of this work. It's competing values of assets, which ones do we do, what do we do, how do we get to these different ratings and whatnot? We have rates and different rate models and utilities and its impact, we have CIP and what projects, what are funded, partially funded, unfunded, and how do those projects feed into what the community believes, that we had a strategic plan that was informed by the community saying, these are the things we want to focus on? And then, another layer to that is, okay, well, now we're focusing on them, but I don't like how much you're putting towards it, or maybe not put so much. And so, what that tells me is that, one, we have a good plan in place, because it's creating dialogue and it's challenging, it's doing a lot of challenge on the city's part, and we, and equally, there's being, there's challenges on the community side as we talk about mill levy increases, property taxes, taxes in general. And so, you know, what all of this showed me is that there, there is no apples-to-apples comparison, and I think we, we try to do that a lot, and I think what we need to recognize is the nuance of all the things that we do, there are things that can be scaled and fit that other communities do that we could do, and if that's a good practice, then we should do it. That is an authority that, again, I always talk about the authority that the commission has. We have the authority to do these things, not do them, repeal them and all those, it's a matter of whether or not we choose that, we choose to act upon it and have consensus to do it. And so, I do believe that there are some opportunities that were shared to us this evening that the commission can act on and we can be able to tighten up some things. I don't think this was, this was not about a gotcha presentation, this was a presentation of saying, we've done some good things, we got some good credit out there, I don't know how many people here can say they got good credit, but we have good credit, and it's afforded us some opportunities to do some things that maybe we didn't have the opportunity to do 10 years ago, maybe they didn't want to do it 10 years ago, but we're doing it now. And so, I understand how that gets things tense, it's, you know, to the point of when you have to get something done now, if you procrastinated on it or you've neglected it, you know it's going to cost you, you know that with your car, if you wait till all, you have two tires that are balled out, if you wait till all four are balled out, you got four tires you got to pay for instead of two. Those are the, but you have to expect that expense, and if you don't, then you either got to borrow it from someone, you got to ask someone, can I hold some money until I get paid, or you can CLARNa or all the other different flex payment things that they have now, you can do that as well. Those are tools and opportunities. So, I think where all of this conversation has kind of come to head to for me, is that it has showed that we, we are in a time where we have a community that desires to know a lot of complex things about their city, about their community, and that we have to kind of change the way we engage in that, but there's also some things where we can, we can move towards and we can find consensus on, and there's other things that we're going to do that we're just going to continue to do, and that's not, that doesn't mean that we're not listening to the community, and it doesn't mean we're not paying attention or that we know better than they are in that case. I think there are just things that are sound, that are more sound practices than what we can, you know, hypothesize in a group. But I think having that dynamic and having that conversation tonight has, and having this presentation come in front of us, but also to the community, speaks to that. And I love Rochelle's analogy of, you know, the cone of uncertainty. I don't ever want us to do something where I am putting that pressure, financial pressure, on a commission that I may not be on 20 years from now, and I think there's so much that we can balance in that and that we're figuring it out, and we're figuring out as things move and evolve with us. And so, a lot of the things that we talk about in regards to funds and, and rates and whatnot, there are things that we can control, but there are also things that are outside of our control that... our control that could equally benefit other members in our community. That's getting a little bit existential, I talked about it, whether you want to talk about capitalism, how much people pay for housing, housing policies and all the other things, cost of food and all that, those are also things that impact communities. And so it becomes a balance of, you know, if I want, you know, streetlights that work, I don't want my yard, I don't want my basement to flood, I want to be able to go down to the park and do all of these things, what is that cost? Because that's, that's the environment that we live in and until there's some sweeping radical, something that changes, that's how it functions. So how do we create a common understanding and knowledge and education around that? Which is kind of what we're doing right now and how we're kind of peddling through it. And I think this was a year that was, I think it tested and stretched all of us and I think it made us better and it's going to continue to make us better. And we have good supports from our, our consultants that are helping us with that. And I feel, I feel more comfortable and I feel more confident about that. And I do want the community to continue to come out, not in a sense of challenging that the city is doing something nefarious, but that we are trying to make sure we are being good stewards. We put it in our strategic plan to be good stewards of your money, our money. So I, I, I think tonight's presentation, I hope tonight's presentation helped everyone see that so that we can continue to have this engagement, hear from the community and be, and be able to, to, to address the concerns in a way that is not adversarial. One of the things I thought of as we're talking about the strategic plan and looking at our different outcomes, maybe giving it a little bit more visual, and I know I'm kind of cheating a little bit into something, but, you know, we know that our strategic plan has been in play for a little over five years. And maybe looking at it in a way that's a visual presentation of like different bubbles and how input, you know, whether it's our Connected City, prosperity, economic security and the interest and the weight of that, it is symbolized by the size of the bubble. Because what I'm seeing, and what I've seen all year, is that people have spoken to the things in the strategic plan, but it just seems to be the, the translation or the interpretations are different as far as the value. And so that's, I think that's some work in the next iteration of the strategic plan that we can give that work back to the community to say, all right, so all of these things that are under Connected City, what is their value to you? And to have those dialogue conversations around the value and the mechanism that produces that, because that's a way of educating folks on a little bit on, you know, the funding piece of the very thing that they want. Because I can list all the things I want, whether or not I have the job, the marriage, the inheritance to pay for them, that's left to be said. So I, you know, I feel like this, this presentation in itself gives me some ideas on how we as a community, but also as the commission, can help usher some of these engagement, but also communicate and challenge our community to, to be more solution creators with us instead of problem articulators. And I don't say that in a bad way, it's just saying that we got to get to a point where we know that these things may be wrong, kind of wrong, not all the way wrong, but how do we get to a solution that shows the bigger picture so that we're addressing the, the real concern and needs of the community? So that's all. That was a lot, but I, I just, this was so much and I, I really do appreciate it. I do. I don't want to say thank you. I just, I really do from the bottom of my heart appreciate this presentation and what the team was able to do today and tonight.
Yeah, thanks. Tonight's kind of like showing your work in a, in a test. I think, I think we all understand it's, the result is the budget, but how we got there and how we're managing our expectations and our finances are a whole different thing. And I just appreciate you illuminating kind of what's happening behind the scenes as we manage our finances, but also extending that to the technical details that people may or may not care about, but I do, and I think all of our commissioners appreciate that. So we did this for many reasons, but for me, it helped me, I think, kind of illustrate all of the things that are going on at one point, and there's so many moving parts, that to sit and analyze or to critique one aspect of how we are doing things and to ignore the end result is kind of unfair. So I feel like tonight in illuminating all these things, we've, can kind of enjoy how, how well we've done in our, how we present ourselves to others. We can, we can pat ourselves on the back for how much effort and, and money we've chosen to invest in our community and taking that big risk and step to do so and not poo-pooing it, but actually committing to that CIP that all of you put in place that I walked into mainly and I feel really comfortable with now. So I thank you for having those leadership qualities to move forward through that. Today, we're talking about paying for those. And I think we are well in a position to pay for these things. We just have to explain to people how we're going to do it. And I think today was a good step in making sure everyone knows we're paying attention and we're doing the hard work to make sure that we're not going to get a bill at the end of the five or 10-year period with some debt or unpaid expenditures that we're going to put the community on the hook for. So I think if anything, we're shifting expenditures to now instead of to other commissions and to other members of the community, our children, our children's children and doing those things today. And I think that's hard to do, but I'm proud of the work that you all have done in getting us here and of course, the people that are really doing the work in, in commanding the respect of the community and, and of the auditors and of the financial world. So I'm, I'm glad that we can sell our bonds. I'm glad that we have people willing to pay the best rates possible and that doesn't happen by accident. And I appreciate Dave coming in from Wisconsin and giving us a, a little bit of a pep talk on how we could do things better. But more importantly, I think it showed just how well, how many other things we're doing really well. So thank you for that. And I don't get to say this very often, but it makes me happy to be spending this money because I know we're doing it in a fiduciary or financially sound way. And for me, that's what I worry about every day because that's our job. And, and I just appreciate your work and, and, and also the details on how we're spending the money. So thank you and I don't think we have to have to take an action, but I appreciate your time this evening. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commission items. And you can clear the room if you need to. No offense, but I wanted to make sure we got some business to do after this, so. Any commission items?
Don't think so.
Okay. Anything to talk about on our future agenda? I know Bart.
Yes.
Are you gone next week? Is that right?
Yeah, I'm gonna be gone next week.
So you're missing some of that fun.
I'm going on the 20th.
Yeah.
Oh, anything else there? Anything to add, commissioners on the calendar? All right. And then we'll move to city manager's report.
Just two of our standard reporting items. I would, would note that we're adding some analysis from the police department that we get to do when we see the trend in data. And so it's a report that we started, they've, they've started providing and, and it's nice to see the, the trends.
Yeah, it's good.
Any answering questions?
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager on his report? Any public comment on the city manager's report? None in the room? Sherry? Okay. And then ex parte conversation again? I think we review that. Any comments or questions? All right. Commission calendar. It's pretty late. Okay. Is there any general public comment in the room?
Probably got to read the thing before you go to.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Thank you, former mayor. The public is allowed to speak on issues or items not scheduled for discussion on the agenda. Comments should be limited to issues and items germane to the business of the governing body. The commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Members of the public will be limited to three minutes of comments.